Y'all ready?
I did.
Okay, good morning. I'll call to order the March 4th, 2024 regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners and our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance and after that I'm going to ask Pastor Josh Frazier to come forward for our invocation. So if everyone please stand for our pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the God who has saved us and to do with love and compassion and to forgive us for what we've done.
Let's pray. Before we thank you for another day that we can come together and be able to talk about the things that are going on here in our county and as we think back, we think of all the things that we've learned and the wisdom that's been gleaned from the years past. As we look towards the future with great anticipation and hope, I ask that you would give wisdom and guidance to every decision that's made for those that are in the seats to make decisions for this county and for the area that we live in. I pray that you would give them great humility but also wisdom and guidance in everything that they say and do. And as they make decisions, I pray that they would be able to stand boldly on each one of those and be able to know that what they did was the right thing for our fellow man. We pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Josh. Our next order of business is our public comments, but I mean, I'm sorry, public hearings, but we do not have one today. And after that, our public comment session is next. Would anyone care to address the board this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to constituent concerns. Does anyone have any constituent concerns this morning?
I had a couple of calls. I think I had some staff, you know, onto the questions. I couldn't answer the questions, but I got them in touch with some people on staff that could point them in the right direction. I appreciate Brian and David for taking care of some of that stuff for me.
Okay, if there's no other constituent concerns, we'll move to administrative agency reports and presentations. None of those today. Discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone have any adjustment to the agenda or discussion this morning? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the items, five items on our consent agenda?
Yeah, Brian, could you just run over for my information about item number three, the legal publishing to review? Is that a national organization that goes over ordinances for counties and makes sure we've got all our Ts crossed and Is dotted? Or could you kind of?
That's it exactly. This is a firm that actually specializes in code books, ordinance books. And so, you know, you guys have been really busy approving and updating a lot of our ordinances. And now that that project's coming to an end, we'll send everything to them. They'll make sure that, just as you said, everything is correct, Is dotted, Ts crossed, the right format, and then they'll provide us new versions of the ordinances. Thank you.
Any other questions? Here and then I'll entertain a motion where you approve the five items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you want to post? Okay. I will say that item number two, that will be, the ordinance adopted today, which they just have been, will be updated on the website and in the ordinance books in the office of the clerk by tomorrow morning, Tuesday, March 5th. Okay, our next order of business will be a regular agenda. The first item is to request approval of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Haywood County, North Carolina, approve an installment financing contract and delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters.
Mr. Chairman, this is really related to the last couple of meetings we've had. You remember at the last meeting, you did that initial findings that you supported, sent to the LGC, that there is a need for the jail and that financing, it would be in the best interest of the county. That was non-binding. This is more formal and shows that the LGC, that the Board of Commissioners is authorizing myself, Christian, and Chairman Inslee to execute the documents associated with the financing that's slated for. The sale is on March 13th. We actually meet with the LGC tomorrow at noon, virtually, for them to approve the debt instrument or us going forward. And then on the 13th, we'll solicit bids for the financing. We're only looking at a 20-year level principal payment. In our estimates, we used 5%. I think based on the information I shared with you last week, that we're probably in good shape with our estimates based on our double A rating for these limited obligation bonds. If this was a GO debt, we would be double A+, which is fantastic news considering the loss of the mill. But our economy's strong and I think S&amp;P looked favorably on that. So I can answer any questions about details if you want, but this kind of coincides with the last meeting and the work session we had last week.
Did you repeat that? Did you say double A+?
If we were actually going out for GO debt, that's called the issuer credit rating, ICR is at a double A+, just one knock under triple A. But limited obligation bonds, because you're collateralizing the building that you're building with the funds, is always one less. So it will be double A for lobs. If we still had an outstanding rating, which we do not because we refinanced the debt for the last rating, you could have viewed this as an increase in our rating. But basically, we did not have a rating since 2019.
So our rating with S&amp;P has gotten better?
Correct. Yes, sir.
One notch better, so.
See Christian smiling over here.
She's smiling, but it's just winding to an end. The last couple of weeks have been very difficult on Christian.
I appreciate the staff, Christian, and your staff and anyone else that was involved in that to, because what that does is that saves taxpayers money on interest when we have good ratings like that. So, you know, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Terry.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question about the agenda before we go any further? Where's item number one?
There's a typo.
Oh. Okay, just wanted to be sure. That's okay. That's okay.
We know what that interest rate is.
March 13th is our sale date, so we should have some figures late that afternoon or early on the 14th. Just depends what time the sale is. But we'll know those interest rates on the 13th or 14th, yeah.
That being said, Brian, I know that our following meeting will be the final vote. Is that correct?
This is actually the final vote to authorize staff to actually go through with the sale. If we get to the sale on the 13th, and let's just say, you know, our estimate's five, we're hoping to beat that, but let's say that it's some kind of outrageous interest rate or something like that, we still have a way to back out of that. But loans in North Carolina are very stable. Davenport that we use for our financial advisors, they do a lot of these. So I think everything is straight and I don't think we'll see any curveballs, but this project's been difficult. So the next action after this for the board would actually be on the meeting on the 18th. And at that meeting, we would bring to you the contract for Vanoy to authorize so we could go ahead and give them the notice to proceed on the 19th. And then later that week, we will actually close the bonds, you know, sign the documents and everything and have it finalized that week.
Right. And maybe what I should have said is that'll be the vote for, to approve Vanoy for the construction.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Brian, what would be the process that if we have to have a tax increase, when would that come into play?
Based on the conversations and what we talked about at the work session last week, it's my understanding that the board would like to see us use fund balance to pay that interest-only payment in the upcoming fiscal year '25. And in '26, we would have a full year of principal and interest payments. And we will have to adjust the tax rate at that time in FY '26. And the budget that I present in May for FY '25 will have fund balance paying for the interest-only payment. It will be this time next year that we're talking about adjusting the tax rate for the full year of principal and interest, which I believe is a little over $2 million based on our estimates.
I had mentioned in the workshop about the revow and stuff. That'll be after the revow and then?
That's going to, that's actually going to be timed together. FY '26 will be the revow year and FY '26 is the first year you get a full year of principal and interest payments. So they are actually tied together.
And you estimate the rate to be between 4% and 5%, maybe even less?
We've used 5%. You know, I would be tickled if it's going to be, you know, under 4 and 1/4. We'll just cross our fingers and hope for the best. But that double A rating we have is going to help us some.
I remember, I used to think 6% was a good rate way back, you know. It's usually around seven or eight. So at least we're talking in lower numbers today. I guess we got used to the really low numbers, which were always unheard of, I thought, in my lifetime anyway. So, except, yeah.
That interest rate we got for the school central office a few years ago, I think that was 0.99% interest. That was all for those days. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion where you approve item two that's listed in the regular agenda and our, on the agenda. You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, here and then, everyone indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, that's four to one. Okay, let's move on to the number three listed in our regular agenda is approval of additional funding for completing access to broadband in the amount of $276,000 from fund balance and approval for county manager to execute all related contract documents. And David Francis, welcome this morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Everybody had a nice and lovely weekend. It's good to be outside in the sunshine once again. Just, you know, over the last month, we've met with you all in describing the next steps of where the broadband funding and grant funding for broadband is going to be heading. So just, you know, just review everything, where we've been and then where we're going. So what's been completed is the growing rural economies and access to technology supplemental program was in 2020, provided 304 locations to Fines Creek and the Crabtree area. That was with Skyrunner. That grant was 1.2 million. The county contributed $256,000. Next round was the Great Grant, provides federal rescue plan funds for broadband service providers to deploy broadband infrastructure. And so that grant was for 177 residential locations, five businesses. And that's to be completed in April '25. That grant was nearly $900,000. The county contributed $74,000. Great Cab was another round that the DIT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology, allowed counties to use cab funding to completing access to broadband, funding to Great Grant grant applications. So we had a Great Grant application hanging out there that was not approved at the time. And so they, DIT moved this to Great Grant, cab for the county. That did not cost the county any funding at that time. And so that was awarded to Spectrum for 301 locations, I said, and they'll be completed in November of '25. That grant was 1.3 million dollars. So now it brings us up to where we're heading in the next round in the next few years. It's completing access to broadband. Provides federal rescue fund acts to create partnerships between participating county and the North Carolina Department of Information Technology and competitive bidding processes. And there's about $400 million in this fund for the counties to access. Be mindful that, you know, we've had to have a smaller percentage in the previous rounds in the completing access to broadband. We have a 35% contribution for that. North Carolina's, the IT's providing 35%. And then the internet service providers will be providing 30% for that. And then in the future, we have the broadband stopgap solutions program. That will help with, again, providing other funding for things that are further out there that's not in, you know, that we can't provide, get funding for, people, the internet service providers are not as interested in. That'll help get those last few homes there. And then a new program that we've not gotten any of the guidance on just yet is the broadband equity access and deployment, which is a big program. So that, there's 1.5 billion allotted into that. So I'm hoping that we can get a lot of things done. So where we are right now is that 75% of the households in Haywood County have internet. And then these programs we've talked about, there's about 19%, or about 6,266 folks will be receiving, you know, internet through these grant programs. And so that leaves us with about 2,055 homes that we will be addressing in the completing access to broadband, which is about 6% left of the internet population that needs to be served. So what, you know, what we've done, and you know, to you all's credit, you know, you all bought into this and have done such a good job, you know, with, you know, the broadband committee. And it's been, you know, very fruitful, not just in Haywood County, but, you know, the broadband committee, you know, with the lead of, you know, Dr. Deborah Porto, is recognized throughout the state. You know, that, you know, she, you know, her voice throughout the state of North Carolina is recognized for what she has done here for Haywood County. So, you know, so when you add all these grants that we've received, and there was the ARDOF grant, which I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. The ARDOF grant is a rural, a federal program. And so that's going, that's about a $7.1 million grant. So when you total all these grants up, Haywood County's received about $10.5 million in grant funding. Direct funding that the county has is about 331,000. And the Great Grant funding is about 3.3 million there. So we've contributed 10% of that 3.3 million. That's a pretty good return on investment there. And if you go add that, you know, that 331,000 to the 10.5 million, you know, we've really gotten, you know, a lot of bang for our buck here. And a lot of people now have internet and, you know, we hear, you know, stories, you know, all the time about, you know, it's gotten closer to me. I was able to get it. I was able, you know, to reach out. And the providers are actually, when they see somebody over here on this street, hey, you know, you weren't here originally, you know, on our grant, but we're going to help and help you get that. So that's some of the things that, you know, some more good stories that are happening through this. So when, you know, when we were thinking about how we're going to, you know, address completing access to broadband and we were meeting, you know, we was talking about priority areas, but we're still getting guidance from the state as of late as Thursday. They're still trying to figure out some things and change some things. So we're not designating priorities today. We're just making sure that we're going to send the grant funding down to the state. And, you know, so our ask is today is, you know, for the 276,000 out of the fund balance to match what we have left over from the ARPA funds of 424,000. So that way, we think with, you know, that larger number would be more enticing. And the good thing is that the providers, there's three providers in Haywood County, Charter Spectrum, Skyrunner, and Zito. All three internet providers are interested in this program and have shown interest in the program. So I'm thinking that we will have, you know, we'll have, be able to serve because there's pockets, you know, everywhere. There's not just one location. There's pockets everywhere. So I'm hoping with this approach and that we, you know, we send our, we send a few priority areas and then let them decide some other priorities, that that'll, that'll be a good fit for us and we'll be able to, you know, help folks here in the long run. So I think that we have come a long way and it's been, it's been, you know, a pleasure to work with the broadband committee and things that we've gotten accomplished. So respectfully, we request the additional funding.
And we've gotten, I think you said 10.5 million in grants so far?
Yes, yes, sir.
And we're able to, I just remember, I don't know, five, six years ago, people were constantly coming to county commissioners meeting asking us to try to do something. And of course, the state legislature had tied their hands in a lot of ways. And, but we've been able to work around that and be able to provide broadband for, you know, a lot of folks in our county. So it's almost like, reminds me of when they were, you're trying to get power, you know, to the communities back in the 20s and 30s, so.
That's the same way that we have attacked this, is, you know, considered it a utility.
That's exactly what it is, yeah. And we saw that especially during COVID when our school children were having to, you know, learn at home.
Find hotspots. You know, we use several programs to be able, you know, to give out hotspots to, you know, to children and things like that. So some kids are still using the hotspots today.
Now, just a comment, Mr. Chairman, we have had a lot of push for this. And to Dr. Porto's credit, I was in a meeting with Brian Denny in Raleigh about a year ago and all the internet providers were there. And there are so many streams of funding, I get lost with the acronyms. I mean, there's.
Oh, it's, I had to write them out. I can't remember them anymore, so.
Yeah. But, you know, the push is to get all 100 counties connected. That was our past president's initiative, Tracy Johnson with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, past president. And Kevin Corbin, our legislative delegation, has really been great. He had a meeting scheduled out in Macon County. I think county manager and I went out to that. And I think Commissioner Best. And so we've had some support. Getting back to Dr. Porto, I was in this meeting a year ago and Charter Communications guys, all the providers across the state, and they're the biggest ones in the state. And this fellow came over to me and I was talking to him about our needs in Crusoe and various other areas. And he asked me what county I was from. And he said, oh, oh, I know Haywood County. He said, you have a broadband committee, Dr. Porto's over that. And I said, yeah. And he said, she calls me on a regular basis and keeps her foot on the gas pedal.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, in Raleigh, we were known, our broadband committee, Dr. Porto, this guy just, oh, I know Haywood County. So I appreciate the help. It's been, it's been a group effort. And to get this down to 2,055 homes in Haywood County in such a short time, I think that's, and I know there's some work to do with that 19%. I understand that's ongoing. But, you know, we've, I think as a team, I think we've done very well. And everyone had their role in it. Even Zito, you know, we have to partner with them. They're providers in Haywood County. We had a lot of complaints. And I met with our state legislator with the owners of that company here about three months ago or six months ago now. It's been, you know, time gets by. But, you know, they have upgraded their amplifier system. They've put some more money into Haywood County and got an office staff person now to answer the calls that people have. And, you know, we may not be completely there yet, but, you know, if we keep, we keep pushing, you know, I think it's.
You know, and, you know, having those channels of communication, as you mentioned, you know, Dr. Porto, you know, the Spectrum charter knows who Dr. Porto is, you know, that's, you know, we have a great working relationship with Skyrunner. And as you've mentioned before, you know, Mr. Long, those partnerships. And that's what, you know, that's what, you know, we have developed here. And, you know, we, you know, you know, we were receiving a lot of calls about Zito as well, too, you know, you all, we were getting through. And Dr. Porto and Hannah here has managed those calls and, you know, and developed that relationship to where when something came through here, they were able to go and, you know, help the customer and get, you know, and Zito, and they, you know, and it's been just a, we've gotten there with them to where things that we, I don't know if we've not had, our complaint volume has went down to where it's almost nothing right at the point now. Knock on wood. I don't want to jinx it. But that's the, you know, but that's the type of, you know, leadership that we've provided, you know, to get this done. And like, you know, like you said, those, the Zito folks are still our county residents, you know, and it may have been harder, but we worked, we worked through all these issues to make Zito, you know, you know, fit in here a little bit, you know, outside coming in, you know, and got them to where we think that they are, you know, they've done, they've invested a lot of, like you said, a lot of resources here in the last few months, so.
David, I appreciate the work y'all do. When I first came on the board in '20, the Greater Grant was just really, you know, taken up. We were just starting really to roll with that. And it's been good to see, as anybody knows me, knows I say the wheels of progress in government turn very slow. But it's been so good to see this step along and see this service reach homes all across the county. It changes our ability to educate our children. It changes and improves our property values. It brings the potential for new business to the community. And I just, kudos to all of you. And Dr. Porto has been very kind to speak to me in language I understand about broadband. It's been helpful to educate me. So I just, I can't say enough good things about the leadership we've had on this and that we are seeing it reach so many homes in Haywood County. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
David, how do we decide who will get what areas, whatever, when they get that situated?
So they have priority areas, you know, this 2,055 is going to be priority areas. But we've gotten new guidance from the state on Thursday that we're still trying to, you know, like how are we going to present that to, you know, the state, which priority areas, you know. We have, you know, a list of folks who've called in. You know, we have a list of where, you know, where other providers, where the providers are that might make it easier. So we're still going through that and trying to assemble which way is going to be the most beneficial for the, you know, execution of this grant. We're still, you know, contemplating. So when we get there, we'll certainly let the board know.
We can hold, sort of hold them to pretty high standards, can't we? I mean, as far as.
Yeah, because, yeah, because, I mean, the, you know, especially, you know, we're providing the funds, but the state office is the one that executes the contracts and oversees those contracts. It's not the county. So that, so, you know, they have a, you know, certainly a bigger stick than we do with, you know, the internet service providers. But they provide all that and the oversight for that.
That meeting we had here a couple of weeks ago was real informative and I appreciate that. And all the work y'all are doing is that. That, it's funny because we just talked about it, you know, them stepping up their game and not getting many complaints. The next day, it was all over Facebook saying had a line down or something. That's just bad luck for them because I know they are trying. Because I, you know, I talked to the guy that owns it too. And he's, he's always been helpful every time I've had to call him.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Just a comment as well. I was shocked when I learned that there wasn't more folks that did not have any access to internet. I may want to give us the number, which is great. I mean, I know you said 75% do have access to broadband, which is great. But if you're one of those that don't, you know, it's, it's the end of the world for you. The good news is that we're working on that. And I see this as something great and definitely have my support. And like others have said, we appreciate you, David, and broadband committee and all the work that they've done to get us at the point.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I also want to thank Dr. Porto and Hannah for all that y'all have done and.
And, yeah, let me, let me recognize the entire broadband committee.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. So Joey Webb, there are own Joey Webb here. Alicia Jack from Haywood Community College, also served from Haywood Community College, colleges, Bill Driver, George Roland. Karen Hammett is our community representative. Hannah White is our program coordinator for economic development. Cheyenne Truitt is our GIS analyst with the county. It's right there. And Russ Harris from Southwest Commission and Becca Scott from Southwest Commission. So they've led this program since 2020. So it's been, it's been good to have these folks to work with. So recognize them, then I'll, then I'll do the other. Just a second. Okay. If you'll do the vote, then I'll recognize the.
Okay. Okay. So any other discussion or comments on this? Okay, here and then I'll entertain a motion where you approve what's labeled as item three of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. As you know, I've been blessed, you know, in this position to work with a lot of people. Don McGowan, you know, Patsy Davis on affordable housing, you know, Clark Duncan, and those folks over from Asheville. But, you know, the person I almost talk to daily, and there certainly has not been a week that goes by, except when she became a grandmother, was Dr. Porto. The passion that she has shown in this position, it's volunteer. It's all volunteer. There's no, you know, no payments here, all volunteer. And she has put so much time and effort into the broadband committee and to make sure everybody has broadband. And we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. We can see the light of the tunnel. So as of today. So, as of today... Dr. Porto, would you please come up? So, Haywood honors. Dr. Deborah Porto, Chair, Haywood Broadband Committee. Your leadership and determination have made broadband connection a reality. Thank you so much.
Oh, my God, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Talk about being surprised. I appreciate, you know, really, all the kind words, but what they go on to say beyond what Tommy said is they recognize Haywood County because the county commissioners are really interested, because we have an awesome GIS person, because David Francis is totally always answering those phone calls we ask for him. But I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done, and we will get to those 2,000 people as, as the future grants go on along the way. But thank you very much for this awesome surprise, and we'll continue working until we get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item, it's labeled item four in our regular agenda. It's a request approval of a McGillan Associates Phase Two Agreement and Budget Amendment for Engineering Services for Tropical Storm Fred in the amount of $1,635,000, and approval for County Manager to execute all required contract documents. Our Assistant County Manager, Chris Boyd, is here to talk, speak to that, or is that right? Or are we going to have Mark do that, Mark Caffey? Okay, okay. We got Mark Caffey from McGillan Associates. Welcome, Mark.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if Chris was going to present that or not. So, we have a presentation here, this is a continuation from what we've done before. So, first of all, thanks for having the commissioners and staff, appreciate the opportunity to be here and update on this project. I know it's been a while, but we're, we're making some progress, and we're moving on to Phase Two, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. Okay? Thanks. So, again, we've been here and talked about the entire project, Phase One, I'll give you an update real quick on Phase One, but this is primarily talking about the Phase Two contract and how we move forward. So, anytime you have any questions about any of this, I know some of this runs together, there's a lot of funding mechanisms, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, there's a lot of pieces and parts. So, if you have a question, just interrupt me and ask a question, that's what I'm here for, is to make sure you get updated, okay? Next, please. Okay, so this is an overview of the projects. You can see the Phase One projects are shown in red. You probably see better on your, if you have a handout or on your screen. Those were the sites that we did, the clearing and snagging on for Phase One. The intent of the Phase One was to take the low-hanging fruit, the ones that did not have permitting requirements, that's what we did. A couple of those fell out because of permitting requirements when we met with different agencies, but we have good progress on those now. We have, of the eight sites, six of those are, wait, sorry, two of those are basically done, waiting on a little bit of hauling. Couple of those need a little bit more debris, and we're in the process of getting those approved with county staff about a couple of things that, that showed up kind of due to the storm event we had about six weeks ago. Also, leading into that, that's why Phase Two, you'll see, covers the entire length of the DSR, because with that last near-flood event that we had, it moved some of our debris, and particularly lower down in the watershed. So, we're making that DSR the basis of all these bid contracts, okay? So that the contractor's going to be responsible for removing all of that material. We're also getting more right-of-entry agreements so that we have better coverage. We've got about 65% of those today. But you can see it's significant what Phase Two here is. Phase Two is, includes 43 clearing and snagging locations and 27 stabilization sites. 258,000 feet for the clearing and snagging, and 12,600 feet for the 27 locations for stabilization. So, it's a lot of ground to cover. There's also three additional sites that aren't on there currently, and that's Cold Creek near Sharp, near the trout farm, and Crooked Creek, Crawford, sorry, Crawford Creek near Sharp Mountain, and Sharp Mountain itself, in that turn where, where the road was damaged. And Rattlesnake Branch is another one we're concerned about, but that's going to be a separate issue, it's probably going to include DOT, it's not going to be included in this. Okay? Next slide, please. So, again, Phase One, all of those sites, four of those are going to have final inspections this week, on the 7th. Two of those have already had final inspections, are waiting on NRCS approval, and two of those are, a couple that need a little bit more debris removal that was outside the scope based off of material that moved after we bid it, and those are being considered currently. Phase Two scope, again, that's for clearing and snagging and stabilization. That's going to, the stabilization efforts with STANTEC will be a primary part of this, it's over, it's, over half of the effort on this contract is going to be those stabilization sites. And of course, we have to continue to obtain all the permits, that includes wetlands, stream for stream disturbance, threatening endangered species, that's both several bat species, it's also elk, Appalachian elk toe mussel, it's the trout buffer moratoriums, we seem to have worked out. There's a new one that popped up a couple of weeks ago, conservation easements. So, the properties as part of doing, collecting the ROEs, the right-of-entries for the projects, there are several properties that are in conservation easements. So, now, we've got a meeting on the 12th with North Carolina Land and Water Trust, and they want us to remove the debris by hand. Or with a small footprint equipment. So, that's the latest, is we've got to figure out what happens on those conservation easement sites. And actually, some of those are owned by town and/or county, so, but that's the latest on, on that, on the permitting front. And of course, we have some issues, some time gaps on, there's some, from mid-May to the end of July, we cannot cut down a tree anywhere. And not that we're trying to cut down trees, obviously, we want to minimize that, but if we have to cut down a tree to gain access to a certain location, that can't be done for that two and a half months. So, we're, we're trying to work around that best we can and gain access. Yes, again, 65% on right-of-entries, so probably going to be a second mailing as a reminder on those, and we might need a little help from anybody that wants to so, offer to talk, we'll get a list of that circulated, and if you happen to know those people, that'd be great. Any of the staff and/or commissioners, obviously, have been very helpful in the past doing that, so if, if that's an opportunity that we could pursue. So, we have plans and specs prepared for two of the contracts submitted to NRCS now under review. We plan a total of five, I think I've, I'm skipping, I think I got another slide. Yeah, so, again, just, let me start, the five packages for debris removal down there under Phase Two. Again, we're in preparing three of those five now, two have been submitted. Two to four packages for stream bank stabilization at the 19 sites. So, we have to start, upon approval of this, we have to start with survey, hydraulic modeling, and the stream permitting. Environmental permitting's never stopped, we're continuing to do that with all the threatened and endangered, and again, the conservation I mentioned. And the four sites I mentioned also, it's actually three sites, Rattlesnake's not going to be part of this. So far, we've removed 19,400 cubic yards of debris, and again, completion is anticipated, say, early March, probably going to be the, not this week, but following, so, probably before mid-March. So, that's, that's what I've got so far. Get more slides. Again, the permitting status, I mentioned before, for the most part, threatened and endangered, mentioned you the gap in time we've got from May 15th to July 31st, Appalachian elk toe, that's a total of six sites, possibly three more. The conservation easements, more to come on that, but we're meeting on the 12th. Wetlands, stream, feel like we're in pretty good shape on that. Now, the project schedule, again, design and permitting, currently, you see if we've organized, be of a column there on the stream bank packages, and then the debris removal packages. So, you can see, we're currently working on the design and permitting for both, but we anticipate bidding in April for the clearing and snagging. And of course, it'll be on up into June before we get the, some of the stream stabilization packages together. Those will probably be done in phases as well, because some of those are going to be relatively straightforward, you know, toe stabilization, some rock on the banks, that kind of thing, some of them are going to be very significant. And so, for instance, the trout farm and behind the church, that one's going to take several months to permit, it'll have to have hydraulic modeling on 13 sites, we've got a total of 13 sites require hydraulic modeling, you're going to have to have map revisions on the flood, so clomber, lombers on those, so those are going to take a while to get done, to get approved. And then after they get approved, then, of course, we have to bid those and then get those constructed. So, I expect some of those to run into the, to early '25, the time it's all said and done, those more complex sites like the trout farm. But for the most part, the other ones will be in June, we expect to be able to complete those in three or four months. So, any questions?
Who approves this?
I'm sorry?
Who, who's the agency that approves it? Is it the state or the federal government?
Well, I mean, it's, it's really both, it's NRCS, which is, you know, it comes from federal funds, and then you've got the DRMF funds, which is state money, and then you've got the strap funds. So, those, the strap funds of DRMF, there's not a lot of approval at this point, it's kind of been approved. The NRCS, every plan set has to be approved, and every removal and every as-built, everything has to be approved along the way.
And why can't you cut trees during certain, is that the sap's rising or something?
It's called the pup season for the bat species.
Really?
So, if, if it's a tree above three, above three, well, between that time, you can't cut anything. They don't want us cutting any trees between, between, above three inches in diameter any other time.
And then, so, the conservation easements, you, you were talking about, they tell you want a small footprint in the streams and maybe even do it by hand, but...
Yeah.
I mean, what, what group, is that NCRE, I mean, is that the same group?
Well, I mean, those, those are, it's just any conservation easement, and I, I don't know every conservation easement that's popped up through the 65% of the returns so far. I don't have a list of those right now, but that's why we're having a meeting.
We've got several.
We've got several. And then the, we're trying, I mean, not a bunch, but we have several.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, I mean, you can, you know, through surveying over the years, you know, conservation easements, albeit they're, they're more popular than they used to be, they're, it's not like every other track has a conservation easement on it, but there, there are a handful of them that we need to deal with. Because they were at first wanting us to leave the debris and said it was habitat. So, that, this kind of defeats the purpose to leave the debris.
Yeah, because it's going to move when the next watershed event comes.
Right. So, we're trying to find a, a reasonable compromise, I think they understand what we're trying to do, but we'll see after the meeting on the 12th.
This kind of blows me away because we're being so careful, but yet, whenever that deluge happened, it wiped out everything. If it was going to wipe it out, it would seem to me like a little bit of equipment in the stream, although it's not good, but just for a few, you know, just for a small amount of time, to get rid of, you know, debris that's going to only cause more damage later on.
Seems quite negligible.
Yeah, yeah, it does, there you go, that's right. In the grand scheme of things, it is, yeah. Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Sorry, I didn't mean...
On them, the sites are real hard to reach like that, how close can, can, to the creek can you get with a piece of equipment?
Well, we can actually get in the creek with a piece of equipment as long as we have, there's requirements, you know, you have certain requirements, you don't want, you want clean equipment in the creek as much as possible, you know what I'm saying? And there's checklists for the equipment, that kind of thing. But you can get, you about have to get in there, I mean, you've seen some of the debris, you're, you're not going to remove that by hand unless you had, you know, 100 people. Even then, it's going to take a long time. So, you're going to have to have equipment to remove that, that's all there is to it.
Even if you get a, like a real, one of them real long-reach excavators like they had down here at the lake dredge in the lake, you still can't reach some of it, can you?
Oh, no, you, you can't, and then you can't. You, you still have to load it in the truck and, you know, all those things, and I don't, I don't know if they're as accurate with those long reaches, I want you to think they are. That's not what they're for.
Yeah, it takes a lot more room to move them around and load with them and stuff like that. I just thinking that some ways possibility where if they decide they won't let us get there if that would help any or anything.
Right. I, I mean, again, I think they will understand, hopefully, they can see that, you know, we, we might have to specify what type of equipment, you know, maybe they want a certain-sized machine with rubber tracks, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure that out, but you have to have mechanical help to remove the debris at most of these locations. There might be a few locations down on 110 where you could do it by hand, but you still have to haul it out, so, I mean, you know...
Hard to find people that'll do that by hand anymore.
Agreed. I don't blame them, it's pretty tough work.
Maybe we could have a workday and invite them to come and help.
There you go.
You know, and try it by hand, and then might change their mind.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I wish, I guess they make these rules, but when you come to that area, it's, it's not a typical river, banks, I mean, some, some places, there's not even a bank, it's just straight off into the creek, you know, off the side of the mountain and stuff, it's not, over there's rocks along, you know, it's, there's not, it's not a simple like it is down east, if you will, so...
Well, and to your point, I, I understand, it's like, it'd be one thing if the river heals itself in 20 years, but right now, it got blasted, and what we're doing to clean this up, it's only going to improve it.
Yeah.
We would have been better off if in the beginning we had not had to have engineering and could have gotten a lot of that out in the, under the emergency order, if we didn't have to have engineering and have to wait on that, because it's moved twice, maybe three times with some large rain events. And that's state-level, I think, guidelines that we have to operate under, that we have to wait for that, that engineering.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah. I, I keep trying to say that to everybody, hopefully, somebody, somebody will pick it up and say, maybe we need to look at that a little differently, because at some point you have to weigh, isn't about you guys, we have to weigh the value of human safety against...
Well, but of course, the...
You know, bats and mussels.
Well, true, but the 8.8 million came after the fact. Everything that happens up to that point's FEMA money. And so, you, you know, unfortunately, one of the requirements of 8.8 million is you have to have a engineer drawing.
That's right.
Yeah. It is, I understand.
But it's unfortunate, because that debris has moved, we know at least twice.
Right.
Yeah.
So, just for clarity, the NRCS is a federal entity that is protecting the elk toe muzzle and these...
Bats.
Moffy-mouthed bats and other species, is that, that's correct? That's the regulatory entity that's responsible for that?
Well, it's US, US Fish and Wildlife.
US Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
Well, my frustration during this whole thing, and I, I've repeated it several times to you and several others, when you start putting a bat and elk toe mussels life in front of people...
That's right.
We've got major problems. And to get this fixed is going to be beyond the five of us sitting here at the commissioner level. You know, I, I agree with the chairman and Ms. Best, when that event happened, if they was any elk toe mussels endangered, they got washed all the way to Waterville or Tennessee. But yet, they want to hold us up from protecting people. Again, this is what gives the government a bad name. This is what gives the face of government a bad name, bad policies, bad policies like this. And I've talked to people higher up, and Congressman Edwards, I plan on talking to him soon, excuse me, I think Commissioner Rogers brought something in, I've got a frog in my throat. You've got a frog in your throat, Commissioner. But I talked to several people, you know, common sense, how dare we use that word in government? Common sense, I mean, how dare we use that word? Why don't you take a few onion sacks and go in these places you're going to work and let some volunteers harvest a few of those elk toe mussels and go put them in a fish tank for a couple of weeks, if there are even any there? Get in there and do the work, and then release them after you get the work done. How dare we bring up common sense? How dare we bring up common sense? How dare we bring up common sense in a government meeting? And a bat? Do you really think that a few trees on the creek banks are going to ruin the habitat for a breeding ground for bats? When they've got cliffs and mountains and Lord, the old saying, bats in the belfry? I mean, good grief, every church bell tower in the county's got bats in it. These are things that give even local governments like us a bad name, even though we have no control over this nonsense. People look at us and say, well, that's the government. It's a shame. It's a crying shame that we have to put this stuff right here in front of saving people's lives. I guarantee if you talk to any of those six people up there, that lost loved ones, they could tell you about what they think about elk-toe muzzle and a bat when it comes between them and their loved one.
Oh, I'm sure. And for what it's worth, Mr. Long, I agree with you. But I can't get approval for the money without doing what we're doing.
I understand.
It just takes a lot of people saying the same thing over and over again. Somebody's got to eventually pay attention to it.
Somebody at the federal level or state level is going to have to revisit some of this nonsense. I'm not against wiping out bats or elk-toe muzzles. Let me make that clear to anybody that's concerned about elk-toe muzzles and bats. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in any way saying that we should ignore those things and make them extinct, et cetera, et cetera. But there are common sense ways for everybody to be happy here. Very common sense things that could expedite this whole process, get this done. I'm weary of it, you know? Here we are, how many years now? We're going on three years.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to go through another storm season.
For what it's worth, I was chastised pretty good for considering, for saying the word negotiable. I was told it was not negotiable. I tried.
I don't know how the tail ever started wagging the dog. I don't really know how the tail ever started wagging the dog and stuff like this, but that's what's happening. Tail's wagging the dog. And I'm like you, I'm frustrated, I'm powerless as a commissioner, okay? But I can have a voice, and I've spoken to some people. Need to be some simple, common sense solutions to this stuff.
Maybe, yeah, I agree, particularly within a certain timeframe of the event.
Yes, that's what I was saying. If we could have gone in there and captured some of that, gotten some of that debris out quickly, we maybe could have saved ourselves from some of the headache down the road. But we had to wait on engineering, so, so unfortunate.
Right. So, any other questions on Phase Two?
I guess it sounds like Phase Two's going to be really split into two different phases, since you've got the other bidding. It's almost like we got a Phase Three, but I understand why. But, so there'll be two bidding processes, one in April and looks like one in June timeframe.
Yeah, again, there's going to be five, we're anticipating probably five contracts based on the level of work for clearing and snagging, and then another two to three contracts on stabilization. We're not going to sit and wait on projects if there's a permitting glitch on one, not the other. So we'll bid those out. That's just what our anticipation is at this time.
I think that's good.
Okay, so are you finished with your presentation, Mark?
Yes, I think so. Is there anything left? I don't believe, I think that's it. That's it. Yes, so we're asking for approval of our Phase Two contract for the $1,635,000. And if you've got any questions on that, I can talk about that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'll make that motion if you're ready.
Okay, so this is for item four, numbered item four in our regular agenda. So Brandon makes a motion, is somebody second?
I'll second.
Okay, you need another discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's all for our regular agenda. I'll move to appointments, and we need to, we have a request of approval of appointment of Wendy Jones to serve on the Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team. And I think, was you going to say something?
Yes, Brian had to jump out. Dan Schultz's term on this board ended November the 4th. He had served as an appointee for both the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team. Those teams have requested that Wendy Jones, who is a Health and Human Services Board Consumer Member, be appointed to serve on the Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Teams.
Okay. Okay, so I appreciate Wendy Jones wanting to serve on that. It's a hard board to serve on, so a lot of tragedies there. Okay, so I entertain a motion, we approve item one of appointments.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. We don't have a closed session, so does anybody have anything further to bring before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman, in hindsight, from what we've experienced, I think it would behoove us to get a rapid-response team ready in case of another event like that, while we still have a two-week or 30-day or whatever that timeframe is, immediately after the event. I think we can save a lot of money by having a bunch of local contractors on a go list and however we can go ahead and have that pre-staged. So the day after the event, we can get in there and do this work and save, while there's a window of opportunity, I guess, before all these regulatory groups start getting involved, I think that's something we should look into doing. I know the county manager stepped out, but if we had a rapid-response team ready to go with local contractors pre-approved, get in there in the first so many days when they allow us to get in there, can you just imagine how many millions of dollars we could probably save?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, just the time involved too, because it's been, I mean, we're going on three years now.
Yeah, I hear the frustration, and almost weekly, you know, from our constituents in that area of why it's took so long. And it is frustrating, so I'm with you, you know? I know of a few guys that would probably be ready to, on the word go, to go do that. So maybe it's, it is something we need to look into.
I think that's something we need to have county manager look into.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I remember the day after the flood, I had gone up there and kind of did my heart good because there was, I think every piece of equipment in Haywood County had found its way up there, Brandon, don't you remember?
Yes.
And they were, they were getting it done, and it was remarkable to see, and they weren't waiting on the government to come and fix it. They were doing it themselves. And there's no telling how much money that saved, actually, but not everybody had a friend. I'm sure it was just friends, because I doubt any of them were getting paid for it. It's almost like people were volunteering. It was pretty amazing, really. Stuff, so, okay.
That's a good thing about Haywood County, they've got a lot of people that'll volunteer or something like that. The people stick together when they have a disaster.
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, so, anything else before we adjourn?
No, I'm just glad to see the calendar rolling along, birds singing and green grass, and March is the month when spring officially arrives, so.
That's right.
Okay.
I was telling some folks earlier before the meeting started, you know, that's what's the beauty of living here in Haywood County, about the time a season starts wearing thin on you, we get a new season. So I'm glad to see the trees budding out outside the window there.
Okay. Good thoughts. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.